We just got out of the study session about two minutes ago, so we're all just sort of regrouping here. Let's see, I want to make sure we get our board members back. Welcome to our panelists, welcome to our audience, it's always nice to see you. Alright, looks like everybody's here, so we'll go ahead and start the meeting, alright, roll call please.
Tracy Wells.
Here.
Tracy Lawson. President Dia Socom.
Present.
Present, let's see, I didn't mute myself, did I, just a minute, I was, can you hear me? Okay, alright, great. Let's see, so we just got out of a closed session, I mean, not a closed session, a steady session on our child nutrition service, so. And we'll talk about that later. Let's see, bienvenidos si necesita interpretación en español, por favor busque la información en el chat, gracias. Welcome everyone to, let's see, it's November 17th, 2021. School board meeting, thank you all for being here. I will post the links to, in the chat for the agenda, as well as how to sign up to make comments as soon as I'm done with the welcoming remarks here. And if you'd like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc, be sure to include your name, so we know who to unmute when the time comes. You will be given, it looks like tonight, three minutes on your speaking, and if you need translation, we'll give more time. And if the item you wish to address is not in the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. If the item is on the agenda, you'll be called on when the item is being addressed. As a reminder, this is board meeting for board business, the chat feature is open for members of the public to ask the board, members or staff clarifying questions or make short comments to the panelists. I would ask that you please do not use the chat box for ongoing conversation or commentary. And then as a reminder, because we're meeting virtually, all votes will be by roll call, and we are recording the meeting. Alright, so, thanks for being here, alright, do I have any changes to the agenda?
I have one, three proposed changes, 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3 can be moved to section six consent. 7.4, stay under action. This doesn't need to happen if anyone has questions about those items, but per our agreements on those.
Great, I was gonna make the same recommendation. Any other changes to the agenda, or recommendations for changes? Alright, do I have a motion to approve with those changes? Oh, actually, and then just for the audience who was not just at our study session, we did move the continuation of the study session conversation. And that will come after 8.2, so it'll be the 8.2A or something like that, or the new 8.3, I will do that, Eliana, you can figure out how to do that. Alright, so that's where that'll occur. And then, oh, actually, I was also wondering if we could move 10.1, that's the grand jury response, if we can move that to consent, is that okay, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And so we'd leave the 10.2, which is a resolution on action.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Maria and then Mike, roll call vote please.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Tracy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Dia Socom.
Aye.
President Papal.
Aye.
Alright, I do not see any oral communication comments, alright? So we're on to the bond program consent items, so I have a motion to approve. As a reminder, we moved 7.1, 2, and 3 up to consent.
So moved.
I think Janet seconded, but, okay, no, we didn't hear you, yeah, but I guess I saw the unmute, so I figured that's what happened.
Okay, alright, Maria, and with a second from Janet, roll call vote please.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Tracy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Dia Socom.
Aye.
President Papal.
Aye. Alright, 7.4.
Does anyone have any questions on this resolution?
Alright, so it's adoption of resolution 16, approval of new buildings, modernization, and site work change order number three for Garfield Community School with MK Pipeline. Any questions? Comments, alright, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So you made a second, Mike made the motion to say a second, roll call vote please.
Tracy Wells.
Aye.
Tracy Lawson.
Aye.
Tracy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Dia Socom.
Aye.
President Papal.
Aye. Alright, thank you, Bond team.
Thank you, everybody.
Right. Okay, so we're on to 8.1, discussion of reconvening North Star Forward Committee.
Yes, we are, and welcome everyone, and to our community members. So I have Ms. Sarah Shackel with us tonight, and Sarah is going to be presenting with myself. The memo kind of speaks for itself regarding this item, but we have a slide deck that will give you a little background information, especially if you were not a board member at that time when this took place. And what happened thirty some years ago, which I wasn't in that position to really move it forward, but I'll give you some background information. And I don't think there is even a board member that was here at that time when North Star started. So, and I was not at the district office yet. So, um, let's go ahead and start that slide deck, Kyle, please. When, we'll start with a little background information, and Sarah is with myself to help me along the way. So this is in regard to beginning the North Star Forward Committee. Again, we will go through some information of where we were when COVID did take place and we all sheltered in place, March of 2020. Next slide, Kyle. Go ahead to the next one. So back in the 90s, this was a change for the Redwood City School District, and it was going through several different demographic changes within the city itself. At that time, the superintendent believed it was necessary to start looking at the configuration of school sites to look at feeder school changes and what those patterns would be in the future. There was a huge emphasis on test scores that were given nationally, and there was a lot of accountability. The district did form a feasibility committee to focus on schools. And then there was a community survey that was conducted at that time. And from what I recall as being a site administrator, we were each given the information. And at that time, we surveyed our community, and we surveyed our staffs, and definitely our parents. And regarding the makeup of the district and what it looked like at that time, the feeder patterns of where, for example, a K6, where they would V2 for the middle school, and then the evolution of schools of choice, which the superintendent at that time was bringing forward. Next slide, Kyle. So at that time, it was a recommendation to the board by a couple board members that they felt that the needs of high achieving students were not being met adequately. Again, as I said previously, there was an exploratory committee formed to study this concept and what was going on at each of the school sites when we were looking at gifted and talented students. Then there was a federal magnet program, which became part of the Redwood City School District. And this program were, was a program that the superintendent wanted us to implement. And I was given the task in 1997 to continue with the grants that were written and then to write additional grants. And we received two, three million dollar grants over a six-year period to create magnet schools, that's what they were called at that time. And in 1996, that's when Adelante Spanish Immersion opened up as a magnet school. And then in 1997, North Star Academy opened up. And then each school within the district had a magnet focus to receive the federal dollars that we were, that we were getting from the feds. Next slide, Kyle. So this is some background information on North Star, and this is a piece that Naomi Hunter found at, when she was looking up information and found it in the Redwood City Library. School opened the fall of 1997 with a class of third graders and sixth graders. The school opened as the academically talented magnet school and was named North Star Academy during the second year of its operation. And from this time to right now, there were, there have been several principals at that school site, and at this point in time, we have the great Ms. Sarah Shackel, who is going to move forward with the next slide.
It's funny, John, when I first saw that slide, I thought it was Warren on this slide, because Warren actually used to be, I know, I had to double check. Anyway, so, thank you so much for having me, I'm super passionate about this, so I'm excited to be able to be here to talk to you. So North Shore as a program is something that the community really benefits from. We focus on creativity, task magnet, and high academic rigor. What that looks like for us is that we find that students who are sort of talented academically oftentimes have different needs, right? Just like, you know, kids from, you know, any, any different place have different needs. So we really look at critical and logical thinking, we like to make sure that our curriculum is geared towards creativity. And we do this through a philosophy called compacted curriculum. And so we have three pillars at North Star, depth, complexity, and rigor. And so because we're able to compact the curriculum, we're able to have an enrichment program in the afternoon every day. So the kids are able, we call them scholars, are able to really explore their passions. And through this, we find students' commitment to just sort of their excitement for school and through, you know, things that really matter to them. And so we see this every day, it's really fun to see the kids get excited, they'll run up, you know, up to me on the playground and explain some very complex idea that they've been working on. And so our program has really encouraged that type of thinking and that type of community with our scholars. Tell you, want to go to the next slide? Oh, Dr. Baker, would you like me to?
Right, I'll go ahead, that's okay. The district embarked on a process to create smaller. Someone needs to please mute. Okay, I'll go on, on top of that. So back in 2018, we went through a process of looking at our district. And by looking at our district, we wanted to see, because we were having, we were having declining enrollment. We created a committee to look at making the district smaller and leaner, giving the loss of, giving the loss of that enrollment. And then we were also heavily deficit spending. And what that meant was that the County Office of Education really wanted us to look at the 16 school sites with the enrollment we had, and the money we were spending was not making really any true. Did I have someone? Okay, I think we've got it. So we created a committee in 2018 that was really going to look. So we created a committee of members from our community, it was parents, it was teachers, it was staff, and it was also site administrators and district administrators to look at the 12, to look at the 16 schools in the district at that time. What we wanted to do was to look at them and look at their enrollment and the cost that it required for us to maintain each of the school sites. The committee, this district-wide committee made 24 recommendations, and we had quite a few meetings, which were facilitated by an outside facilitator for us. And we reported back to the board often, and then there were recommendations that were made regarding many of our school sites with, in the Redwood City School District. Those recommendations, along with community input, took place during that time. And we had our major meetings at McKinley, because that's where the auditorium could hold the amount of people that we needed. And even for some meetings, we had at Sequoia, because their venue was louder, larger. And then we also had it at the Fox Theater, I think, once also. So during that time, there were recommendations, and one of the recommendations as we were making our district smaller and leaner was to look at North Star. There are positive comments about North Star, there were negative comments about North Star. So on November 28th of 2018, the board approved for us to further study North Star separately from the recommendation of closing four school sites. And that's what brought us forward to the North Star Forward Committee. Next slide, Kyle. Next slide. So, recommended by the superintendent and approved by the school board on January 15th, 2020, there was a district-wide process to have applicants be on this committee. And this application process was an application process which was online and also available at school offices to pick up if you needed a paper copy. We wanted to get a broad representation of parents, teachers, and administrators on this committee. Next slide. So the composition of the North Star Moving Forward Committee, we wanted to have parents who had students who were attending K5 or K8 schools other than North Star. We also wanted parents who had students at North Star, and then parents who had students at more than one school, including North Star. And then we also asked to find North Star Academy alum that had gone to North Star but were now in the neighboring high schools. And then we wanted teachers and principals. Next slide, please. And I'm not going to read this to you, here is the, the purpose of the North Star Forward Committee, and these were the items that we were going to address. So specifically, the committee was charged to focus on the following areas. The exodus of rising third grade students from other schools. We hear about that often from several of our school sites where many children leave during the second grade, and the third grade is smaller, and some of the students' friends have already gone on to North Star, but they're left at their neighborhood school. There is also a feeling of elitism, elitism in regard to North Star and the social emotional impact that that creates for some students. And then there's also, one of the major pieces that we're looking at is the lack of access from the students from the Bayside Schools. We're looking at our schools like Hoover, Taft, Garfield. And we want to make sure that now with our new mission, our vision and values that are promoting equity and inclusivity, that we really start looking at the makeup of North Star Academy. Next slide. So here is a graphic of when we met, the committee met. So one of, so what was deemed was that Norse, we were not there to close North Star, but we could not continue North Star if there weren't going to be any changes. So we want to continue it with some changes. What are those changes going to be? What are the rationale for the changes, the steps for the changes? And how are we going to communicate and explain these changes to our staff, to our communities, and to our parents? Next slide. So the committee met three times before COVID, before the lockdown, February 12th. We set norms, February 25th, we looked at the philosophy, the program, how it's developed over time. We looked at district enrollment trends, and then we started to have subcommittee work on March 9th. But then everyone knows, after that, the next week, schools closed. My assumption is that we were coming back after spring break, as you all know, that did not happen. Next slide, Kyle. So the recommendations for this committee composition. So we are going to need to launch a second application window. At this time, there are three committee members from schools other than North Star not returning in 2022. We have asked all the committee members who are previously on the committee if they will come back and be on the committee that's going to start up again in January. Children of two parents on the committee moved from Henry Ford, and they moved from Orion, and they're now North Star parents. The committee now is composed of five North Star parents, two Roy Cloud parents, one Adelante Selby parent, and one parent from Roosevelt. Next slide, Kyle. This second application window will be completed before winter break, depending on what is decided this evening. The same process as 2019 is going to go forward in creating this subcommittee to select new members. Subcommittee to look, I want the subcommittee to look for parents and teachers from schools other than North Star and Roy Cloud. It has to be inclusive. Next slide. And this is work, I would like Sarah to start on, on, on slide, yeah, start here, Sarah.
This is where I get so excited.
Where you get to have your time, yeah.
So, Dr. Baker and I met, and we talked about what we could do immediately, given the board's mission and given really our desire for equity at North Star, it's been something we've been talking about, working on for a long time, so I'm grateful for this opportunity. So our proposed plan is something called universal testing, which is something, if you look into the research around these type of programs, universal testing is recommended, all, all the experts that I've talked to about how to find more equity, this is what they suggest. So we have the COGAT test, which is a test that we've always used. We're going to, the plan is, assuming you all say it's okay, um, the plan is to administer that test, the screening format, to all second graders throughout Redwood City. We, the, one of the really nice things about the test, and one of the reasons that we're moving from Form 9 to Form 8, which is a little bit of a shift, is because the test is available in both English and in Spanish. So each child can select the test that will best serve their needs. The difference between Form 8 and Form 9 in terms of the Spanish is that Form 8 is pictorial. So in Form 9, you can have Spanish directions, but the actual words on the test are in English. So Form 8, which is second grade level, is really more appropriate in terms of bringing in all students, regardless of language, whatever their home language is. So I'm really excited about the option to use Form 8. And we're going to have a small but mighty committee of former North Star teachers, who I checked with Wendy, they're already in the system, they're subs for us. And so they're going to be able to go in and administer the tests in students' homeroom classes, so it'll be a comfortable place during the day, during the school day. The teachers at the schools, the second grade teachers at the schools won't, I mean, they can absolutely be in the room, but they won't have any responsibility. So we're not adding to their workload, but we are making sure that everyone in Redwood City has all the information they need to make a decision about whether North Star is the right fit for them. So we'll sort of, once we have all the data, we'll be able to inform parents about kind of, you know, what it is that, the process is. And then everybody who wants to will be invited to apply. We're very clear about the rubric with parents, we, we always have been. So parents actually have the information about whether their scholar will qualify before they even have to decide if they'd like to apply. That's been something that parents have found very helpful, because then it's not like, oh, well, I might apply and then get rejected. The, the parents can calculate for themselves whether or not their, their scholar has the points to qualify. So we're going to also have testing dates on the weekend and after school for students who are private school students or students who are not in second grade. So students who are in third grade and above can still test, because that's part of our process as well. But really excited about this notion of universal testing, it's definitely something that we've been looking at for a while. And I'm, it really aligns beautifully with your goals and vision as a board. And so I'm really grateful for, for the opportunity to propose it.
Go ahead, Sarah, this is yours.
Okay, excellent, so, um, the second grade parents will have the option of opting out if they don't want their scholar to test. And we'll be able to get the results. So this is also really exciting as we go into the North Star Forward Committee. This will give us some real, I'm a data head, Stephanie Vance calls me a data head, I love looking at data, so. So uh this will give us some really good data about what this looks like across the district. As you know, the North Star Forward Committee kind of continues with their work. And then we'll be able to, you know, just kind of. Figure out what's best kind of moving forward. I'm now looking at the comments. I don't know if you want me to or not, but, okay. Uh, next slide.
So the North Star Forward Committee, like I said, all second graders, as Sarah said. Uh, including those who are enrolled in other school of choice specialized programs, Adelante. Selby, Mandarin Immersion, Orion Alternative will be tested. But I just want to make sure that parents do understand. When you chose a school of choice, especially Adelante, Spanish Immersion, Mandarin Immersion, Orion Alternative. It is the administration's hope and mine also. That uh you will stay at that school until your child finishes the grade level that school goes through. Because when a child does leave and go to a different site, for example, like North Star. What it that creates is less students for the next grade level, which would be third grade. And for the school of choices, especially with second language acquisition. It really does not help the program, nor does it help a program like Orion Alternative. Because then the combinations start um occurring. And those programs were developed in a manner to have the same amount of students. So they could continue with their school of choice. So I just hope that parents will uh remember that. And we will continue to reiterate that uh at all times and so will the site administrators. Next slide, Kyle. So this is a discussion for the board. The recommendation is to move forward with the universal testing. Of all second graders in the Redwood City School District, not unless a parent would like to opt them out of that test. But this will give us the opportunity to open the program. To um all second grade students in the Redwood City School District. Not for just those whose parents have decided that that's what they would like them to do. But it'll also give us data on those students that definitely could um benefit. From from a program similar to to North Star and give us the information that is needed. To enlighten us, what do we need to do at our school sites for those students who qualify? But don't want, but don't choose to go. But what should we be doing with our gifted and talented students at other sites? That, you know, maybe North North Star is not the answer for them. That's what their parents would decide not to do. So this is a manner for us to move in that direction of more inclusion. And equity for this program. Now, board discussion, we want to go in that direction. So I'm hoping that you're going to say, yes, let's go, let's do it.
Yeah, so it looks like you don't need a formal vote on this.
No, I don't.
Direction, yeah, from us.
Right.
So I think the things um you'd like to hear from us then is on the composition, if we're okay with the recommendation there. And then on the testing, universal test, right? Is there anything else you want direction on at this point?
No, we would like direction going in this direction because in the past and for many years, it has not gone in this manner. Hell no, it's always been parents who have um selected to have the child tested. It's been done during the weekend. Or or certain specific days that are on calendar and maybe parents can't make it. But uh we feel it's really important to start opening up. This program in a manner that does reflect the new mission, the vision and values that we have put into place.
Great. Alright, so I'll just open it up if the board would like to ask any questions or make comments to the couple items. That uh Dr. Baker and the Shackle are looking for direction on.
I'm happy to share comments. The uh first of all, thanks for bringing this back um and and, you know, reconvening the North Star Forward Committee. And and sort of revisiting its makeup. Uh, you know, it's an important thing. It's going to strengthen Redwood City School District. Um, and it's not an action item, but I I do support these recommendations. Though I, you know, after looking at the SIPs last week, um it occurred to me that we should probably have like parents of ELs. Since ELs are super underrepresented in North Star um when we saw those data. So maybe we can look at that as part of the composition as well. The uh, I also want to just, you know, thanks for reminding us about our new board vision, mission and values. That we adopted during the last school year. Um, because I I agree that we can use them to guide us here. Um, and I was thinking back on three of them as I was looking through it. We had this innovation value that tells us to, you know, analyze our systemic practices. Through racial biases um and and look through an equity consciousness lens. And that we're really trying to dismantle barriers to student learning and emotional well-being. And our equity value calls on us to instill passion and learning um and really emphasize student strengths and gifts for all learners. Um, and then, of course, we have our engagement value. It says we offer, we're going to offer opportunities and access to joyful, rigorous. And enriching instructional resources. And so I like universal testing. You know, this universal testing is better. But you know, in my opinion, it's just not enough. Um, you know, using a test to select students that get pulled out to a different site to participate. In what really sounds like a uh awesome program, you know, joyful, rigorous and enriching program. It feels more like tracking than differentiation. And it still has a limit to access, you know, and there's still barriers there. Um, and they just don't seem to line up with the values. So you know, you, universal screening is great, but it's not really universal access. And I know I, that we could find mitigations that could make a few things better. You know, in addition to just identifying more students, which is great through the border testing. You know, we could start talking about providing transportation and and maybe that's something that the committee will do. But it doesn't feel like the right direction to me. They feel really just like they're mitigations, not not eliminating the barrier, not providing access to the same opportunity. The program's really compelling. Where Principal Shackle, the teachers, the staff, the students and families are doing it North Star, it's really amazing. I mean, we see the newsletters, we see the news programs that the kids are producing. I think Dr. Baker, you touched on it just a little bit. We should be considering how to bring this to every site. So the students can take advantage of it where they are. You know, and if we really want to broaden access, let's make it so every, even more students can participate. You know, and if they need additional support to be able to take advantage of that program, we should find a way to get that additional support. We we do it for many of our eighth graders so that we can expand the access to Algebra One by having a math support class. I'm I'm sure we could, we could find a way to get something like that in there. And look, I really don't want to get ahead of the committee. Um, I know that's what what they're going to be put together to do. So I just wanted to share my opinion. Um, you know, we had adopted the vision, the mission and the values for a reason. Um, and so I hope that as we embark with this committee, we can be bold in the process and recommendations. We don't look for just minor mitigations, that we look for something that we think is going to have longevity. Um, and something that shows that we really truly believe in the unique gifts and strengths of each learner. Um, and that we can find something that really will be the best outcome for each learner.
So Mike, thank you for that because this is um kind of putting your toe in the water for everyone. To make sure that we can bring it to every site. What would that look like? And we would be dependent upon, you know, Ms. Wolf and we would be dependent upon Sarah Shackel and her, her team. To uh assist us in doing that. But this is one manner to start. For this next school year. And then with the data that we view on those students who qualify. But remember, there are not, there are only ninety, it's right, ninety, yeah, three classrooms, ninety seats. Uh, available. We're not increasing those seats. There are ninety. So if I'm a child and my lottery number is not selected, I'm going to still be at my school site. So I look at Ms. Wolf, what are we going to do for that student who, you know, qualified? But number was not chosen, right? So we have to see what we can do to, as you said, stated previously, to those, for those kids. And and I think we should be doing it for all, but this is just one manner in getting there. So thank you for for bringing that up.
Thanks. I just realized we do have two comment cards that have come in. I don't know if you'd like to take those and then continue on with the board discussion? Or if you'd like to continue having board members go around and then hear from the commenters?
Why don't we finish with the board members? Let the board members go around and then we can take the comment.
Okay, sounds good.
So I apologize.
Go ahead, Cecilia.
For having my camera off. I think my wifi is just better like this. Um. I I do want to say, uh, when we talk about equity and barriers, Mike just pointed out. Um, I also think we do do a good job with communication. And my, um, I I guess I want to say my fear is that if we don't get the word across. And some of the parents don't understand what this really would entail, they might opt out from the um testing. And again, we would probably lack um interest. For some of those kids that perhaps may do well um taking the test. Especially if it's going to be provided in Spanish, as he mentioned, some of the EL students. Being an EL myself, obviously over thirty years ago, um had I taken a Spanish test, I would have probably aced it. And it was unfortunate that the barrier is there. Um, so I do think that moving forward, the universal uh testing sounds good. But we just have to be cautious as to how we communicate with the parents and make sure that. Those parents that do not, do not know how to navigate the system, understand what it, what it is. I also do understand for the parents of the kids that have always thrived. They want to see them continue to grow. And I do think that even just hearing from our NEA um. Committee uh member. We do see that if teachers believe in students and parents motivate their students, anybody can thrive. And so um I remember I was maybe two years ago when Sarah and her staff presented, same thing. I thought, wow, if all the schools in Redwood City could be just like North Star. Because I do think that we do have a lot of potential. And I will stop there because, you know, we still have other members to share. So that's it for me.
Well, I agree with both Cecilia and Mike and I really like the universal testing idea. I, I am concerned like Cecilia about having parents opting out and not understanding what they're. Uh, opting out out. Uh, the other thing is that. How are we going to know from the students that opt out if they could benefit from uh enrichment? Like Mike, I would like to see every child given the opportunity to participate in some of these programs. So um I'm all for that and I would like to see us. Enrich not only the children that are going to be in those ninety something seats at North Star. But for the rest of them across the district. And as you know, we've tried testing before and it didn't work. The barriers continue. So I think that we have to um start thinking about not only uh enriching. And bringing students to North Star, but across the district. Um, so. That's where I'm at.
And yeah, I agree with um all the other board members too. I'm definitely in favor of the universal testing. And um really appreciate that um you'll be doing it in Spanish as well for the students to choose. I think that's really important. Because we know that um, you know, some of the students know that, know the answers. But um, you know, if it's not their native language, it might be hard for them to um to answer that question correctly. So um, and and you know, like everybody has said, I think it's important to figure out how we can bring this sort of program to all of our schools. That's something that I've been passionate about for many years. So I'm in support of that too. And um I think that the North Star Forward Committee has a a lot of work ahead of them. So thank you.
Um, alright, uh, I agree with my colleagues. Um, I guess I'll just add to it. That uh I'm definitely for the universal testing. I think as um Dr. Baker and Ms. Shackle said. That'll give us some good data in addition to helping with the admissions process for next year as well. So I think it's important to do that. I know we, we had that conversation years ago, I want to say like ten or twelve years ago. And for a variety of reasons, we didn't move forward in that direction. But I'm happy that that we are going to now. So it sounds like you're getting a yes on that. So that's good. And then the composition, I do agree with you, Dr. Baker, in terms of um wanting to get some additional. Parents and staff from some other schools on the committee. I think that'll be helpful. I do know that one of the, maybe a couple of comments in the chat were, you know, do we have expertise in gifted and talented programs? That sort of thing. And I know that um Ms. Shackel, I don't know if you can respond to that, but I I know that you. You yourself are, have become an expert and we definitely have expertise in the district. And I know you do rely, you also have conversations with others outside of the district.
Absolutely. We have a few people that we can bring in for specialized, like I have a few people in mind. Uh, and we've been talking with Naomi also about bringing in some outside people. Just to to help get at the core of uh what the concerns and questions are. So absolutely.
Great. And I I think there were some questions just on the application process. If you could just talk, speak to that. Since we did have a few questions.
Yes. So do you want to direct me to which question? So I I can talk through the application process just in general.
Just at a very, a very high level, just very high level.
Like, I can go into all the details.
Or or you could say where they could find it on the website if that's better.
So.
Maybe you could put it in the chat. That's another option.
Well, so there's a little caveat. Until we actually decide on this. I've held off communication just because I wanted the board um to sort of make the directive. Before I just charged ahead. So um tomorrow, actually, we will have an informational meeting. We have an informational meeting at five in English and an informational meeting at six in Spanish. And so starting tomorrow morning, we'll have, well, it's our, the Zoom link is already on the website. But uh we'll go through all the details. We will also, if people can't attend, we will also record it. And we'll publish the recordings of all of that as well as the presentation itself uh on our website. If you just go to the Redwood City School District and then click on North Star, uh and then um. Go to the admissions button at the top, um all the information will be there.
Great. Alright, thanks. Um, and then I just wanted to to add to my comments that I agree with. Some of the other things said, and you know, this is something that we've worked on as a district. To share best practices amongst all of our schools. So North Star is not alone in that. We're talking specifically about North Star tonight and some of the best practices at North Star. That are engaging students at a high level with rigorous um curriculum and enrichment and all of that. And certainly some of those ideas have been shared with other sites already. And then we have other sites that have really wonderful best practices that have been shared with North Star and other sites. We'll continue to do that. So I just want to assure the audience that that will happen. And um, you know, a perfect example is when Roosevelt um was reinvented. Many years ago, it became a project-based learning school site. And part of that was coming out of North Star and realizing how positive uh that's been at that school site. So I'm certainly will continue with that. And I think our goal should be that, you know, every child is being challenged. Engaged, right, with the curriculum. And that's what we want for all of our students. So whether it's happening at North Star or another one of our sites, uh that's important for us to ensure that we're working towards that. Anyway, oh, and then actually, just one other thing, Dr. Baker, I did agree with um a few of the comments. If we could try to get some EL, um, English learner parents on the committee, I don't know if we already have them. But I think that would be a really good addition. If we don't.
We are looking for.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's a, it's always a challenge to find volunteers for these committees.
But we are definitely, we are doing that, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Shackel, you have your hand up.
Sorry. Um, I just want to address, I know there's a lot of concern about this notion of moving the test back. Because tradition, well, the last few years, we've given uh the COGAT nine or, yeah. Sorry, the numbers, yes, the COGAT nine instead of the eight. So for second graders. The reason why we're doing the COGAT eight is entirely because of the test makeup. So the test makeup in the COGAT eight is pictorial. So it removes the language barrier from the students who are taking the test. We will be able to adapt in terms of our screening process to still be able to pull the. to pull the kids who really are highly qualified for North Star. Cause I know there's a, a concern about, you know, maintaining the efficacy of the program. Um, and we will still be able to do that with the universal screening, but we want to make sure that all kids have access to the test. That's the whole point of doing universal screening. And eight, the, the eight does that much better than the nine in terms of that grade level. So it, it's not, um, I understand the concern, but we will be able to keep the efficacy of the program and still give the, the, uh, the eight, the COGAT eight test. And that's come up a few times. So I just wanted to make sure parents are reassured that we will be able to do that.
Great. All right. So why don't we take the, yeah, the two comic cards that we have, two commenters that we have, and then we can continue the discussion as needed. Okay. So, uh, we have Allison Olford and Matthew Schwall. Hi Allison, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Um, I've already communicated with this board. And echoed the parent concerns about these multifaceted problems we're facing with, um, North Star. And I think, um, I, I want to say thank you to Dr. Baker and the board for addressing a lot of these and Ms. Shackle for addressing a lot of the concerns that I've brought up recently. Um, and acknowledge tonight and move forward with some of them. Um, one ask I have around the North Star Forward Committee, when it reconvenes is to please don't make it just about the optics, right? While it's important for our community members to be involved in these solutions, let's not fully shift the burden of the change to them, right? At the end of the day, after the committee has put in a lot of thought, it's really up to the district. Um, to have a strategy, to take action, to define concrete goals and outcomes. Um, and I know this, the other point I wanted to raise has also been addressed a little bit. Ms. Shackle mentioned, that recommending that there's a representative on this committee, maybe not even just bringing in part-time or something, but someone who's part of this committee, even as a paid professional who specializes in this area, because it's not a new topic or issue. Um, and the committee would benefit from the guidance of an expert who's studied the intrinsic challenges and inequities that go along with gifted education and who also understands, uh, best practice, like Ms. McAvoy, like you said, best practice solutions for problems that we're attempting to solve with, with this. So, um, that's it from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. All right, Matthew. Welcome, Matthew.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to touch, and Sarah already touched on it, but the use of the Form nine full test, which was previously used versus the Form eight or second grade test. What I was going to recommend is using the Form eight screening test as a screener, which is, is the way it's intended to be used. If I go to the website of Riverside Insights, who makes the, uh, the COJAT test, uh, they're, they're very supportive of universal screening and I'm supportive of it too. But when you look at their report on universal screening, they mentioned that it usually involves, quote, "at least one additional placement or confirmation assessment." So what I'd propose, um, and by the way, the source of my, my concern about, uh, using the, the level eight test versus level nine, um, was the information session, uh, at North Star two years ago. It was an information session in McKinley Auditorium. You know, parent asks the reasonable question, why use, uh, why test second graders using a third grade test? And the answer from North Star at the time was that the second grade exam was not found to provide as good of differentiation among students. That's why the, uh, the third grade test has been used. Uh, so my recommendation is use the second grade test as a screening tool. Uh, that's the way it's intended by the test maker. Um, and then, you know, invite those students that do well on that second grade screening test, applied to everyone, uh, to take the third grade test. Obviously there is a challenge for those who don't speak Spanish. But Sarah Shackleton is a data head and Sarah, I'm, I'm very confident that you can figure out a rubric that could admit ESL students who don't do well on the third grade test, uh, but have strong performance on the second grade test, uh, and the report cards. Uh, but perhaps most important about this proposal is that then we'd have data. Uh, we'd have both the second grade scores and some of these, these third grade test scores. Uh, and then the North Star Forward Committee could use that going forward to decide, uh, what tests are best in the future. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Okay. So, well, we know that the committee needs to do the work of the committee and make recommendations to the board. I don't know if there is any other comments that board members would like to make or any other uh, questions that you need answered from us before we move on to the next agenda item. Cause these don't actually take, you know, you don't need a formal action vote. The, the cost is, you know, I think it's $7,300 and maybe it might be a little bit more if we took some of the comments into consideration. So.
No, it's fine. We know what to do when you move forward. And then, uh, Sarah, I think has her understanding of what's next for her to do. And then Jorge has his understanding because he's on here on the call of what his position will be now in getting this information out. And then we'll be working on that for the universal testing. We will also take into consideration of, um, comments that were made tonight and we'll look at the chat, not that we'll, we'll try and, and between Sarah and myself, answer these questions in an email and try and get them on the website. So that, you know, if people are interested, they can go back to it in that manner. Okay.
Great. And yeah, maybe some of the comments also you can bring to the North Star Forward Committee as well. Cause and I imagine those are some, some of the things you're already planning on discussing with committees. So.
Right, exactly.
Great, great. All right. Anything else from board members before we move on? Or from Ms. Shackle, or you just say goodbye?
So can I ask just one clarifying question? Um, just so that I understand when Sarah was talking about, um, an informative meeting tomorrow, is that for second graders going into third grade next year?
It's for everyone. So we, um, in an effort to communicate, we like to make sure we're giving all the information that we need to. We will give like an over, well, we'll give an overview. I've done a little tour video. So it will be just more information. Um, and then we'll be able to record it and save it. So anybody who's interested, we go over the process for, people who are in fourth grade or seventh grade, uh, as well as the process for people who are in second grade. Is that answering your question?
It does. But then I guess my, I guess my next question is, were parents informed about this, uh, meeting tomorrow?
So, uh, yes, it's been on our website and as parents have asked, we haven't sent out a district-wide email. I can talk to Jorge about that tonight if he wants to do that. But again, we didn't want to make any decisions until you talked about it as a board. We have plans. We just haven't made final decisions about execution in terms of communication. So I'm happy to talk to Jorge about it. I actually am happy to have more meetings. Uh, we, you know, if people would like further meetings, we can still have them. But we wanted to have something as soon as possible after the board had, uh, discussed this.
So Cecilia, to, to just take your, your, the response, uh, uh, a next step. So we are working very closely with Jorge and Michelle. And so what we have planned to do is similar what we're doing with vaccinations that start tomorrow at Hoover. Is making sure that we have information, uh, available to parents vis a vis text, vis a vis, um, email and vis a vis robocalls. For those parents who, um, are ELs, for those parents that are on our B-side. And we just wanted to make sure that we could go forward with this universal testing because parents will need to understand what this is all about, because they've been taking tests in regard to other academics in their classrooms. So here comes another one. So we really want to make parents about knowledgeable about what this is, what it means and what, um, their, their score is going to equate to, which would be another meeting with the parent to determine if this is the direction they want to go. So there's still a lot more communication that needs to take pay place, especially on our B-side, todo en español. Does that help?
Yes, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure again, when we talk about communications, I know I didn't remember, you know, seeing anything. And so I just wanted to make sure that if we, you know.
You have.
And, and, and you know, again publicly, uh, Jorge Quintana does an extremely well job in communicating. But again, when we talk about this process and the fact that we, you know, talk about equity, I feel that if parents don't know about this information, I tomorrow. Again, they probably will if they look at the website, but it's unfortunate that some parents don't know how to navigate the website, may not go there for the information. And again, maybe farther down the line, they will get a text or an email and they would click on the link and able to watch this webinar, which would then give them the information that they would need. And again, I know that we do do a good job in communicating. I just want to make, I just wanted to make sure. And you know, again, I, it was more of a clarifying question for me. So I appreciate what everybody does.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I think we'll move on to the next agenda items, since we still have several things to talk about tonight. Okay, 8.2, we're on to the presentation regarding potential trustee area revision.
Yes, and I believe Josh Chisholm is with us now. I see him, I see his picture on the site. Hey, Josh.
Hi, Dr. Baker. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing?
Good. Thank you for having me. I will, uh, is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen?
Go right ahead. Yes, please do.
All right. Be here, get to the beginning. Okay. All right. So, uh, thank you, board. Thank you, community for having me this evening. We're going to cover some potential, uh, scenarios for the, uh, rebalancing, uh, the trustee areas and the population within them. And so, uh, last we met, uh, we were in October and we discussed that, uh, the current trustee areas are out of compliance. And that we need, would need to make some adjustments to get back into compliance. And as you recall, we need a, no more than a 10% variance of population amongst the most populated and least populated trustee area. And so, uh, here we are tonight, reviewing the initial scenarios. We do have two more meetings, uh, available. If we need them to review more, uh, re, review revisions, uh, if we need them, uh, in December. And then, uh, we do have the final meeting for adoption of a new trustee area, uh, map in January. And so these slides, uh, we've covered, uh, just as a reminder, uh, here we provide a breakdown of your district and the demographic composition. And I'm going to kind of, kind of jump through these and get to, uh, the meat of this presentation here, which shows the current, the, the, the new scenarios. And so this, this, this slide here shows the, uh, population density of the Hispanic voting age, uh, population here. And the darker the red shows the more compact, uh, more dense population of the Hispanic Latino voters. This is a reminder of your current trustee areas that we're at 26%. Uh, and that, uh, these, this row here does show, uh, where the variances are located. So really trustee area one, two, one and two are pretty darn close, uh, to the ideal trustee size. Uh, don't need much for adjustments. And then trustee area three is, is low. Uh, four is really, uh, the driver here. Uh, as well as five, four has too many people and five doesn't have, uh, enough. And so, uh, we'll see here on the map, this, uh, purple area is trustee area five. This is, uh, the, the most, uh, deficient for population in the purple. And then in the blue is, is where there's too many people. There's, uh, there's, uh, almost 3,500 people high in the trustee area four. And so, uh, we took some of the feedback that we received in the previous meeting and have created a few scenarios here for your consideration and feedback. And so the way to, uh, interpret these maps is the, uh, purple lines on this map are the existing boundaries. As you can see here, and then the colors are the, uh, the color shades are where the new areas would be. And so for example, trustee area four, uh, was, uh, had too many people. And so that area needs to shrink. Trustee area five was the, uh, least populated trustee area amongst your district. So that area needed to grow. And so this is, uh, an example here where trustee area five, uh, uh, shifted north on the northeast into trustee area four to pick up some of that population. Uh, where trustee area four needed to shrink. And so the common theme that you'll see in all three scenarios that we created was that, uh, the trustee areas are, are, are uh, shifting to the north, uh, and, and to the northeast, uh, you could almost say, because trustee area four and five are are really driving this process. Um, but as you can see here, trustee area three was also fairly significantly low when you consider that 10% is our threshold. Uh, so, uh, trustee area three really needed to pick up some people as well. Uh, and if you look at this here, there's only, well, there's really no, uh, very little or to no shared boundary with trustee area four that was most populated. And so everything really needed to shift, uh, to the northeast and in order to rebalance. And so those are the, those are the scenarios that we, we created. And so this, uh, this scenario, this is scenario one here. You can see that trustee area five, uh, shifted to the northeast. Trustee area three shifted, uh, and picked up some of what was in trustee area, uh, five, uh, to, to pick up that population, uh, and, and even shifted slightly into trustee area two to get to a point where, uh, you'll notice on the, on two slides from now where we're at a 1.4% for trust, for scenario one. Uh, so this is a, this is a zoomed in version of, so you're more easily able to see where the changes occurred and where the, the adjustments were made. Uh, trustee area one was a little bit low, about 350 people too low, uh, in the existing trustee areas. And so uh, that did push into trustee area three. And as I mentioned, trustee area three did shift, uh, kind of to the north where trustee area five was. And so that's, that's scenario one. I'll notice, uh, we, we showed this slide. I just showed this slide. This is a 1.4%. So very low, uh, option here for variance. As we look, uh, at the considerations, uh, you know, of course, reducing the, uh, total population is certainly, certainly our main driver to, to get that total population variance down as, uh, as low as we can get it. Uh, we certainly wanted to avoid limiting voters', uh, options to reelect trustees. So we want to respect uh, the incumbents, uh, that are in and the will of the voters, uh, minimize changes as much as we can to the existing trustee areas as, you know, it was an extensive process to get to, uh, the trustee areas that you have. And so minimizing those changes is, uh, of course, one of our main goals. And then, uh, for this one trustee area five, uh, was, uh, really the driver to relieve trustee area four, as we discussed. This trustee area four was, uh, uh, the, the furthest, uh, had grown the most over the last 10 years. And, uh, uh, again, this, the, the CIVAP data, which is citizen, if you recall, citizen voting age population data, uh, this, this does promote a majority Hispanic Latino community, uh, in trustee area five. And so, uh, if you look back at this data, this is trustee area five. This is the sitting, citizen voting age population column and the Hispanic Latino row. And you can see here that there is a majority, uh, Hispanic Latino voting age population in trustee area five. Jumping to scenario two, I'll skip right to the zoomed in portion. You can see that trustee area one did shift further to the east or I used to say southeast, uh, here in this scenario. Trustee area five, uh, very similar, uh, little bit different here in the southwest corner of area five, but did shift to the north, uh, and. to the north as, as needed in order to reduce that population out of trustee area four and to increase the population in five. Little bit different breakdown in, in trustee area two, where three really covers more of this area in two, and two kind of shifts down to the southwest. In this scenario, similar, similar goals here as the other scenarios, minor changes. We still, still maintain a majority Hispanic Latino community in trustee area five here in scenario two, and this is at 3.3% variance. These are both very good, very low variances from, from our perspective and what we see across the state. You see a slightly lower voting age population in the Hispanic Latino from scenario one, but still a majority, majority here for the Hispanic Latino population in trustee area five. And then, and the last scenario that was created was scenario three. I'll jump to the zoomed in version here where you can see the changes. This would be more similar, I would say, to trustee area one. Using Woodside Road here as a dividing line to, to help keep trustee area three from the east side of Woodside Road. And trustee area five covering a, a, a more similar area that, that was previously created. In this scenario, trustee area one does come up into trustee area four in order to help balance out that higher population in trustee area four. So this, this scenario, still, still maintaining that majority Hispanic Latino community in, in area five. The suggestion from the district to keep the North Fair Oaks community together was, was certainly considered here. We took that feedback from the last, last meeting. And then, as I mentioned, trying to use major roads or highways to influence the maps was, was considered here. And so in this scenario, similar to scenario two, this is 3.3%. If you add these two together, it'd actually be 3.4%, but this is a rounding difference here. It does, it does round, round to 3.3% if you take it out another decimal place. Again, this is, this is similar to scenario one from a 58% Hispanic Latino in trustee area five, which is encouraging for us to see. And the final slide here, we try to provide a visual of all three of the scenarios compared to the current trustee areas. And so, and also provided the trustees on these maps to ensure that the, to show that all the existing trustees are, are still in the existing areas. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Any questions from the board members? I'm going to look over and see if we have speaker cards. I didn't see any earlier today. Doesn't look like it. Um, all right. So there's no questions. First of all, thank you very much, Josh. Really appreciate the information and all the work that you've done. Any comments that folks would like to make? And then I guess, at this point, just so we're clear about what direction we're giving, we have the three scenarios that you've laid out, and we can provide some comments on that. And then we will have an official public hearing, right, coming up where we take again additional comments. And then at the, at the second hearing, we'd need to make a decision, right?
So we don't have to come to a decision at the next board meeting. See if I can bounce back up to the timeline.
Yeah, I was going to get back to the timeline.
Yeah. So at the next board meetings in December, it's not a requirement to come to a decision there. But if we didn't, ideally, we have very minimal changes to one or two of the scenarios. And we would come back in January and, and make a decision to adopt one of the, the final scenarios at the January meeting.
Right. Okay. So, right. So this is an initial review at the board meeting, and then we have the public hearing on December 15th, and then the final public hearing on the 19th. Yeah. Great. And I, I don't believe we've been getting comments from, I don't know if the district has gotten any comments from the community. We haven't gotten any emails as far as I know. I know we went through a pretty extensive process last time around, and we did have a lot of comments. But you know, now we're making more minor changes. So anyways, I'll just throw it up for the board members if you'd like to make comments on the three different scenarios. We'll go from there. And we, we don't have any comment cards.
That's the one, the one question I'll ask, only because it's just hard between the slides, and maybe you just know this right off the, right off the bat, Josh. But the, the demographic mixes look pretty similar between the three scenarios, and they actually percentage wise look like they're pretty similar to the, the current areas minus the population variance. Is that, am I reading that right? Does it, did, did all the scenarios that you presented to us tonight pretty much have similar demographic mixes?
They do. And, and as Ms. McAvoy mentioned, since these are such minor changes to the existing trustee areas, that the demographic composition is, is not likely to have a major change.
One thing I did notice, and it's, it's, you know, it's percentage margin, so it's not that big a deal, I suppose, although maybe it's a question for the board and for you, Josh, that scenarios one and two, one and three, in addition to providing the Hispanic Latino majority, for one and three, you also get a majority minority trustee area with trustee area four. And then two, you again have a majority white. Now, again, it's just, you know, minor, it's percentages, but I don't, I know last go around, we, we had a conversation of a goal. I don't know if it was a former goal, or formal goal, or just what we talked about, but we talked about looking for those majority minority trustee areas and trying to maximize those. So that, that's sort of one thing that popped up to me. And again, I, I think it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's still minor enough that I'm not sure it matters that much. And maybe legally, we just need to be looking for the majority district that we, trustee area that we've created with five. But do you see what I mean with area four? Trustee area four in scenarios one and three, you actually get a majority minority district.
So you get it, you get it here in trustee area five in scenario one, but I don't see any others that are over 50%.
Well,
I see what you're saying.
When you add them up.
Yeah.
And I don't, maybe I guess, so that's not, I, for some reason, I thought last time that was one of the criteria we were working towards, but maybe I misunderstood and we just highlighted it.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. That's a good point.
And then, and then the, you know, the other thing is, last time we did this, we did add the schools onto the, on, on to the different scenarios. And I think our goal was to try to have our trustee areas a similar number of schools, or at least ensure that people had more than just one school. And so one of the things I thought might be helpful for the next meeting is if we could add the schools onto the maps.
Absolutely.
Little stars or something. And because we have had changes there, we used to have six schools and now we have 12. So that's where we could see some. All right. So I will stop talking others.
Could you put up the maps back, the, the three of them, please? Okay, thank you. Um, I think I'm, I'm just looking at it. I like scenario two because it doesn't seem to have a lot of squiggly lines, this, you know, or little pockets. I think it looks a little bit cleaner to me. But, I mean, I see what you mean about the schools. That may make a difference later on. So, but just looking at it, I just see the lines seem to be cleaner on, on scenario two for me personally. Because if you look at scenario one, then area three kind of goes in more. It's not as, I don't know. It just, that's just my perception on that.
Maybe not as compact.
Yes. It just seems to be more balanced, it looks like, and easier for people to maybe know where the boundaries are too.
I'll just echo the last comment that came in. Scenario three, I mean, for the alphabet streets, part of Centennial over where I am, you know, scenario three, kind of, it's a little weird that it cuts it up from that neighborhood too. So I don't know if that's what Maria was getting at for the compactness, but all the crossing over and over El Camino kind of changes those neighborhoods a little bit in a funny way. So one and, one and two don't do that, but you can see the, the yellow area approaching over El Camino into the Centennial neighborhood.
I think that's something important to consider because we don't want to start breaking up those neighborhoods, especially like, you know, Centennial is not a huge section. So it, it doesn't make sense to break it up like that. And my only comment earlier was that, whatever Lisa already said, I'd like to see the schools on there.
We can, we'll add those schools for sure. That's an easy, easy request.
We must be comment around the Centennial neighborhood or the ABC streets, some people call it, staying compact together, similar to sort of the North Fair Oaks area that we've talked about wanting to do that.
Are, are you referring to scenario three, this area up here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what happens is area one kind of crosses over El Camino into that zone and that particular neighborhood. Yeah, I mean, I think they feel a unity from, you know, at least, I mean, you know, from the comment that we got, and Mike lives there, he would know. But it's a sense I get, know, you know, the people that I know who live there. But I guess, you know, people feel like that with any neighborhood. So, so I do think the comment is good to try to keep kind of neighborhoods together.
Okay. If, if we were to adjust scenario three and convert this back into trustee area four, how, how did, how do you all feel about, you know, kind of scenario two, where we, where we jumped over Jefferson Avenue? Would that be acceptable to make up the population lost out of trustee area one, or, you know, maybe this little area here?
Yeah, I do think having the schools on there might be helpful to see.
Okay.
Because I think in the scenario two, I think area one, I think, I think then Roy Cloud moves to area one, is that correct? It's hard to tell from the map. So that's where I think it would be, not, not to say that that's good or bad, or, but I, I think it might be that one of the trustee areas winds up getting more of the schools, and I think we were trying to sort of spread those around. Of course, we're schools of choice, so we have parents going all over the district. So I don't know how much that matters.
Yeah.
If people want to respond to Josh's question, feel free to do that. Or Cecilia, it sounds like you might have a comment.
Yeah, no, what, what I was going to say is, one thing to keep in mind for the public, the trustee areas are not going to affect where their children go to school. So even though, yes, we're going to put the schools for the future map, just to clarify, it would just be, you know, it would affect the trustee area as far as when a board member or a candidate will be campaigning for that area. But as far as student attendance is not going to affect it. And again, to keep in mind, as board members, we've mentioned before, even though the school sites land in our areas, we at the end end up, you know, caring for every school district, every school in our district. So that's it. It's just a comment.
And that's a very good comment, Cecilia, because when we went to trustee areas, that was a big concern that we all discussed at length, that we are a school district. Yes, we're in trustee areas, but all board members are responsible for all students in all schools and all staffs in every school, not just because it's in their trustee area. So thank you for saying that. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree with her comment. I think that we are schools of choice, and I think these are not the school boundaries. It is, as she said, more for the elections than for anything else that we do.
I've heard it said that we're a school district, not a district of schools.
Yep. Definitely.
So, any other comments? So I don't know if we answered your question. Gosh, I don't think we did.
I saw some head nods.
Um, how does it typically work if you can remind me or remind us? So do we need to stick with the three maps? I mean, we could make adjustments and then bring those to the public hearing, the first public hearing. Can we make additional changes there for the second public hearing, or do you need to keep the same maps?
No, we can, we can generally, generally what we do is, if we have changes to scenario, I'll use scenario three. You know, if we bring trustee area four back to, back down to El Camino there, and we shift, you know, trustee area one, if we need to, maybe there, maybe it's still in compliance and, and we call that good. I would bring scenario three back, but I would call it scenario three A, because it would be the first revision to scenario three. We can create a brand new scenario here if none of these work and call it scenario four. But that's, that's how we would come back at the next meeting with, if we have no changes to scenario one and two, we would have scenario one, two, and three A. And if we have changes, we may come back and, and have scenario one A, scenario two, and scenario three A. And at that point, we might have have a consensus. But we can still adjust, adjust the maps if, if that's part of the process.
Right. So the head nods then that you saw, sorry, I think I was looking at the maps, I mean, the head nods is to go ahead and adjust area one, keeping the Centennial area altogether, oh, scenario three, sorry. So keeping the Centennial area together, so adjust that, and then make whatever adjustments you need to make to trustee area one or the others. And then I think what we, so is that something the board would like Josh to do? Maybe just give a thumbs up so I can see. Okay, well, you have, yeah, okay. Yeah. So why don't you go ahead and make those scenarios three A then? And then, um, we would like to see the schools on there. I think that would be helpful. And welcome, William. Hello. Did you want to say something, or are you just joining us?
Uh, yeah, it was, nice to be with you. I know, it sounds like Josh has got it, and, and it sounds like we've got some direction for, for the next meeting. So that's good.
Okay. So any other, do we feel like, at least at this point, prior to Okay, so any other, do we feel like, at least at this point, prior to seeing the schools on there, are there any other maps that you'd like to see, or do you feel like scenario one, two, three, and three A will suffice in terms of our decision making at this point? Okay.
I think it would suffice, you know, again, for my personal preference would be to make them, uh, look uh, less, oh, wiggly and squiggly all over, more uniforms, so, again, my preference is the way, without looking at, thinking of schools or where they are, uh, would be for the scenario two and keeping the, um, ABC streets together and North Fair Oaks together as well.
So Josh, did you get that? So definitely everybody wants to make sure that, uh, that, that Centennial area is kept together and it's not split up. That's, that's, I hear that loud and clear. And then also to remake, to make sure that the, uh, area five with, you know, the Fair Oaks community area, that that stays together, so, um, those are, and then also putting the, the school names, the schools where they are in those areas. Those are how I would surmise where, where the board is leading in this point in time. Correct? Thumbs up with that one? All right, okay, perfect, perfect.
Perfect. Okay, good. Well, we will, uh, we'll go back to the drawing board, make a, a few changes, and then we will bring, bring us back here in mid-December for, uh, another discussion.
And then we get, uh, Josh, just one clarification. So when you get the, um, drawing, when you have them redrawn, then you'll get them to us and we can put them up on the website ahead of time, so that community can view them, and, um, board members can also see them ahead of time.
That's, that's right. Uh, we'll get them to you early December. That way you have, you know, at least a week, preferably ten, ten days or more to have those on your website to give, you know, your community plenty of time to absorb and, and be prepared to provide some feedback.
Okay, perfect.
Can I ask, actually ask just one more question? So William, I don't know if you heard this question that I brought up earlier, I don't know if you were on the call, just about the majority-minority district. So should that be a goal of ours? I mean, is that, well, I'll let you speak.
Yeah, no, yeah, I did hear that. So I think that there's kind of a distinction to be made. There's, um, thanks, Josh, yeah. So there's the, there's essentially a rule of requirement, um, to aim for a, a majority-minority district. So, and in this case, we're looking at the, the columns, uh, the darker columns, which are the citizen voting age population. So you can see there, trustee area five, you're fifty-eight percent of your citizen voting age population, that area is Hispanic-Latino. So that's a majority-minority, uh, trustee area. I think the trustee area five currently is that way, and under all three of these scenarios, it's about the same percentage. Um, I think the other thing that you were pointing out, and I think it was on scenario, uh, actually, it's this one, on, on scenario three as well, is not necessarily, if we look at trustee area four, um, I, we don't necessarily have any, any one protected class that is making up a, uh, a majority, but if you notice the white, uh, CBAT number is under fifty percent. So if you were to add all the other, uh, ethnic races together, that is sort of a plurality, minority group, uh, excuse me, area, you could say. So I think that's something that when you can accomplish it, some boards will see that as a goal. It's not necessarily a requirement, but that might be one reason why, you know, a map that has that type of district versus one that doesn't, might be something that the board would be interested in, but it's not, it's not sort of the hard requirement that we have where we can draw, um, a, a completely majority area like we do with trustee area five. So I, I hope that answered the question.
We did have the two areas, you know, one that was the majority Hispanic-Latino, and then one that was basically minority whites. It was majority of the other protected classes, as you said, or other ethnic racial identities. Um, so, so one, you know, so the only other comment would be is that I, you know, I appreciate, Maria, I think you said scenario two, I think, doesn't break up, is it scenario two that doesn't break up the areas in kind of the choppy way?
Yeah.
As choppy way, right? Is that, is that the one you're pointing, so, so I don't know, Josh, the only other thing might be is if you could look at scenario two, if there's a way to sort of keep that direction of not having it, um, having the areas be more contiguous, or I guess compacted, but also get that majority non-white district area, if that makes sense? And I don't know if that's even a priority for us, but, um, with all the conversations that have been going on nationally and locally as well.
To try to, here in scenario two, to try and reach that plurality where this goes below fifty percent, and maybe try and increasing the Hispanic-Latino or one of the others.
Yeah, we're pretty close, so.
Okay. Got it.
I think it's the same in area two, pretty close as well.
True, pretty close. Might even be easier to accomplish in scenario two, because you have a few extra people here in this one, where maybe one, you know, what, moving one census block over can make the difference here and, and actually potentially even reduce your variance a little bit.
I can see your mind already working, Josh.
I'm taking those.
For us, that's great. All right, um, any other final comments before we move on? All right. Do you have enough direction from us?
I do. Thank you for the feedback. This was helpful. Um, we'll be back December fourteenth. December fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
December fifteenth. Good. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right. We'll have a new board president on December fifteenth as well. All right, um, so, let's see, we are on to our eight point two, A or B or and a half, I don't know, point five. Um, so back to the food service to kind of just, uh, close out that conversation, because we had heard from the presenters and we heard from those who wanted to comment to the board and staff. So, seems to me we need to give some direction maybe to Dr. Baker and/or the food service, uh, the Child Nutrition Service Committee on kind of how to address some of the comments that came in, or we can do that here? Any thoughts from other board members?
I would wanted to first say thanks to, uh, we didn't get a chance to, and so that's why I think it was really important that we carried the story here, but just the challenges that, uh, you know, that the program is facing with staffing and, and supply chain, it just, it's, it's a remarkable year, and I really appreciate Anna and Patricia for presenting tonight to us, um, for the full ninety minutes. Uh, lots of detailed information in there. Uh, it was really insightful. I also want to thank the parents on the food committee that came and shared their comments and their feedback too. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's time and effort out of their day to come in and, and put that in. Um, I, I think it, it sounds like remarkable things have been changed. I mean, what, what we knew in July for we'd be able to do for food, I mean, they had no idea what the protocols would be like, and it sounds like we're getting back to being able to offer fresh choices through, forgot what they called the salad bar, but, uh, but, but essentially through the salad bar. So everything seems to be trending in that direction. There probably are places where we can make healthier choices, um, and I think it's a good opportunity, so I forget who's on the food, I know Maria's on the food committee. Um, is it Cecilia, that's the other one? Yeah. I mean, I, I think that there's, there's a lot of good questions that came in, um, about, you know, maybe reducing some of the sugary options in the morning. Um, you know, it's, it's probably worth having that discussion to see what is possible. Um, we, we obviously have to offer food, uh, and so that stuff has to be there, and we're, we're living within a constrained bounds, but but maybe as part of the committee, you'll be a little bit closer and be able to have a little bit more detailed conversation, say, well, what is possible? What is it that we can go through? Um, they kind of put that slide up of, we get to sort of say what the goals are, and then the, um, you know, Anna will help us figure out what can be done within those goals. Um, and so I, I think I would appreciate from the, you know, if, if, if you guys don't mind, in the food committee, kind of figuring out what, what are reasonable goals, um, and either acting on them right away, or if we need to bring it back and discuss it as a board again, um, that would be kind of the direction that I I think makes sense to go in.
Yeah, I mean, Mike, we were going in the right direction. We were getting our, you know, scratch cooking, we were trying to get, uh, we were getting the leads, we were trying to hire chefs, and then the pandemic hit, and it just all went downhill. I mean, we, uh, Lisa knows, we were getting locally grown, uh, fruits and vegetables from around, and I believe Anna says we're still are getting some of those, but uh, it's just that being able to even get, uh, our trays, you know, we, we've done a lot with recycling, and we have to do probably more. Um, but i- it's, uh, it's been challenging, and I really want to say thanks to the staff and Anna and, and Patricia, because they have personal, uh, issues that they've been dealing with, and they show up and go to work every day. Yeah. And our staff too, when they're shorthanded, you know, they, it's not easy. Um, and I can tell you that, having done the work myself. Um, I try to, you know, walk in their shoes and go and see what it is and get the certificates and all that, so it's hard to get all the children through. We have tried to, um, for quite a while, figure out how to give them more time in the, in, to eat. We tried, um, some come in early, some, you know, they have different times, but there's still only so much time that we have to get all the children through, so that's been a challenge. Um, but we're always looking for different ways of doing things, and we will take a, another look at it and see what we can do.
So I know, so to move forward with this, um, I know Anna's, Anna and Patricia are still on the call. So to move forward with this, we do have the, um, different types of comments that were made tonight, so when Kyle gives us the, um, the copy of, of the comments, we can, uh, I'll sit down with Anna and maybe Patricia, we can go through those and see which ones are some things that we can do, maybe now, and bring it back. And, um, I know we can look at these comments and see also if there's support that, you know, these parents can provide us too. Um, I don't know about the, the pilot program, that seemed like a, a pretty good idea. You know, you start small, you start very small, then we see where it goes from there. But that's another, uh, manner for us to maybe discuss and, um, see what we can do with that. So, Anna, what, what's your feeling and Patricia on, on that? There she is.
Um, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, we're, we can, we'll try anything. We'll, we'll try a pilot again. Um, we did pilot it.
Right, right.
For the pandemic, we didn't have enough labor. We didn't have adequate kitchens, but we'll do it again if we can. We want to do it. It's not a matter of us not wanting to do it. We want to find the resources to do it. Um, yes, we can look at the committee's asks and bring back, uh, their asks to the, to, um, the food committee, and the food committee can decide whether or not to take things off the menu.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we can try to find other breakfast options that could be lower in sugar. We can do all those things.
And, and I'm not saying do them, you know, district, maybe don't, not do them district-wide, but maybe like start small, start small and see at one of our school sites if we can start that. Because district-wide, I don't think we have the capacity or the bandwidth at this point in time to do it. But if you started small at one school site, and we can just see how that works. I, I, I know it's difficult with, uh, with the staffing piece, and, and as Wendy pointed out, and one parent asked, can't we be volunteers? No, we know that cannot be volunteers. We, we, we totally get it with the union and all that. We're, we're.
We would be, sorry to interrupt, we'd be happy to hire people as substitutes. We can't even find substitutes.
Right, right, right.
So we would pay them to work, and then they wouldn't be volunteers.
Well, that, that's maybe another thought, maybe that's another thought, that, you know, if we have parents that are interested in volunteering, that we make them substitutes, and we bring them on that way, and we start out, if we're going to pilot, if we go in that direction, we start out with these parents who are very eager to volunteer and work as substitutes, and then we're not breaking any type of union contract. Thank you, Anna, for reminding me. That, that's true, that's true. So maybe that's one piece right there. Perfect. We could do that. If parents are willing to help us in that manner, and they want to volunteer, and we start this pilot somehow with, you know, the, the proper staff that we need. Um, and then we see, maybe, you know, next year at this time, we'll be back to maybe better than normal than it was, I'm hoping. Uh, but, uh, we just start out small and see what we can, what we can do. But I do not believe we can do it, um, district-wide.
Right, I think we need some major infrastructure improvements if we're going to do it district-wide. The, the kitchens just aren't designed.
Right, and that's, we would need to take.
Properly.
That's, if that's the case, then we would need to look at that differently.
I'll be like, the committee said, a long-term, long-term project.
Correct. Brings on the master plan again and everything.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Does that sound fine with the rest of the board to just start out in that fashion with the food committee and, and work like, like I say, a pilot, maybe in one school, a small setting, to see if we can get these parent volunteers to become substitutes that will help us in that manner?
Yeah, I like it. I mean, uh, one of the issues is having people that can work the kitchens and having, you know, if we start with a pilot, that would be great. Um, we, we just can't do it district-wide. Um, the other concern is the food supply and what's on the menu, so if we do it on one side, maybe we'd get enough supply for that side alone.
So, um, my, my.
Cecilia broke up.
Okay, sorry. So even if we were to start at one school, then would we say that this could also be an equity issue, because then maybe other schools will start complaining that their kids are getting the sugary stuff versus that school that's not getting the sugary stuff. So I think we perhaps may end up with a bigger problem, because then that's not going to be fair for many schools, right? Unless we're gonna start to pilot the program and try to run with it as quickly as possible. Um, you know, I don't know, it's, it's just the thought as, as, as we're talking about it. Um, one of the things that I do want to say is, for sure, a big thank you to Anna, Patricia, Tommy, and anybody else that I'm missing as far as management goes, and definitely to all the leads and all the actual food workers that are being super flexible on a daily basis to move from one school to another, because again, it takes a village, and I do, um, appreciate what everybody is doing. Um, my comment for the parents, again, is thank you for the comments. Um, I, I would just say at this point, uh, maybe, I don't know, this is just me speaking, but even as a board that maybe, um, you know, if, if they can be patient with the Redwood City School District as we move forward with this and we talk about this issue, because again, this is not just the Redwood City issue. This is, you know, statewide where there's shortage of food service workers. We definitely as board members are here to serve our students and for the wellbeing of our students. So we do understand that some of their issues as far as sugar, sugary items, you know, again, it's an issue for their students. Then on the other hand, there may be other parents that are actually very grateful that their kids have something to eat for breakfast and lunch. So that would just be, again, my, a big thank you to everybody in the child nutrition program.
I did want to also thank, well, first Anna and Patricia, I know how much work you guys are putting into this and how hard the situation has been. But I wanted to thank the parent committee as well with, you guys just have a wealth of knowledge and resources and I would really like to see the district tapping into that, particularly around, you know, access to, you know, grant funding that, that these parents know about that maybe we can tap into. I, I did want to say, it, I believe that we heard from parents from K through two and nobody above that. And so I just wanted to say, you know, this is an initiative that the district has taken over, you know, more than a decade to move towards healthy foods. And we did have the pilot programs, the scratch cooking. We had the Top Chef competition for the kids to create their own healthy foods. And then the pandemic hit. And so it's totally different than it was two years ago. As a parent myself, I saw the food coming home, you know, in the last two years and it is not the same as we used to have. I've also eaten in the cafeterias over the last six years, the scratch cooking and there's just no comparison. So I can understand why kind of red flags went up, alarm bells went off for our new families because the food is not the same and it's not, in my opinion, not adequate. And I'd like to see us get back to, you know, the scratch cooking we were doing and the healthier foods. And maybe the food service committee can look into how we can bring in some of the lactose free options for the milk. And then the other thing, oh, I, you know, I know the parents wanted to eliminate some of the grains, but what we need to hear is what they can be substituted with. It's not as simple as just cutting out, you know, the, the morning muffins. There has to be something that goes in its place. So I don't know what those options are, especially with the supply chain right now. So I think those were my only thoughts on that that I wanted to share.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks Janet for your comments. I, I wanted to, to also add to that. And I think Maria, you alluded to this because actually if you go back 10 or 12 years ago, we started to work on all of this and we actually had made a lot of strides with locally sourced fruits and vegetables, organic. You know, really looking at those, the scratch cooking. I know I'm with you Janet Maria. I've been in the cafeteria and had some of those yummy scratch dishes and they're just delicious. And so I think that, you know, the parents are bringing up a lot of things that we worked on for a while and then partly due to budget, partly due to supplies, and then certainly the COVID hitting has really impacted all of that. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to Anna and Patricia, Tommy, all the leads and the food service workers really appreciate all that you're doing. And, you know, just hearing all of the staffing issues and supply issues that are going on right now, it's just huge. So and I did see comments earlier from parents that I think parents understand that, that we're in a special place in time. So, you know, maybe as a path forward, in addition to what others have said is given the difficulties right now with staffing and with supplies, we could try to address some of these issues with what are some short-term things that we could do? What are some, you know, medium and then long-term? And certainly as you start to think about the long-term, those actually need planning to afford us to do those, right? So whatever kind of grants that parents are willing to write us with, we've actually talked about, we need to update our master plan for our facilities. We're just about wrapping up the bond that we projects, you know, in the next year or so. And so we have talked about, you know, what's next? And so Anna, as you said, you know, in order to do more of the scratch cooking, assuming that we could get the staff we need, we would need, you know, to upgrade some of our kitchen facilities. So anyway, some of that, you know, that's sort of longer term sort of thing that we could, we could talk about. And so anyway, so I'm fine if the, if we want to ask the Child Nutrition Service Committee, I know that's Maria, Cecilia and staff to, to maybe, you know, absorb everything that we heard today and the different emails and letters we've gotten and to try to sort of identify what can we do now? And what we need to plan for? Cause I think you're right. We all want healthier, we all want the healthiest food for our students and food that they'll eat, right? That meets all the guidelines and allows us the supplies that we can get. And it's a complicated puzzle, right? To put it all together. And then the only other thing I, I wanted to add is, you know, we did talk a little bit about sustainability and I do think that that's something we need to make sure is in the mix because as we move forward with San Mateo County guidelines and trying to do waste reduction and all of that, I think we should try to move towards reusable trays and, you know, less throwaway items, less, so, so again, that's, you know, looking down the pathway in terms of what we can do. So I just wanted to, I don't, I don't think that was really specifically commented on. And then I guess the other ask has been, and I don't know if we have a, either a board liaison or a staff liaison to the 50 person plus committee. I know they have a meeting coming up. Is that something Dr. Baker, you've talked about or has the child, has your committee talked about? So my, we need to have a liaison who could help sort of, you know, get information out to the committee and take that information in.
So what Priscilla had recommended was possibly having a, a parent from that committee be on the, the food, I mean, the child nutrition.
That would be great.
So that was Priscilla's recommendation. So we can go in that direction. And so that when Maria, Cecilia meet with Anna, Anna's and I think Patricia are in that, on that committee also, that there be a parent representative from that, from that committee to, to meet with them. And that parent committee would select that person who would attend. Is that correct, Priscilla? Is that, is that, we had talked about that previously.
Yeah, yeah, we have talked about that because as, as you've heard from the meeting this evening, that we have parents that are very knowledgeable about what is best for our students and they are, they're very much willing to help. Some were asking about how, what are the equipments that they needed that maybe they can help in that process also and also writing grants. So I think we have very valuable resources that if at least, you know, we can accommodate all of the 54 members now, the parents, but if they could select a representative for them that could attend our meetings. And in the future, we're thinking that we can make the CNS committee meetings more regularly, like maybe quarterly instead of as needed for now. And, and that's mainly because of COVID, but if we can make it more of a regular meeting and then they can also participate, I think that would be great. I mean, like everyone said, everyone wants to provide the best for our students. And even in the past, it's not really the money. We know, we don't even look at, are we deficit spending or not? I think it's more on what is, what we can do for our students. So that has always been the direction that we've been getting from the board is to look at what's the best choices for our students. So that would be great if they can participate.
Okay. And I think I saw, I don't know if Jessica is still on here, but I think she's the chair of that committee. So Jessica, maybe you can go back to your committee and then choose the liaison who could work with our district staff and with Maria and Cecilia. And then there's been a lot of great comments. I mean, clearly that committee has some amazing expertise on the parents. I mean, some of them are professionally working in this area, right? So we definitely want to be able to tap into those individuals as resources. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Anything else? Any other comments before we move on? All right. Well, thank you, staff. Thank you, parents. All right. So it is nine o'clock or almost nine. Normally take a break. Let's see. I think the rest of the meeting will go pretty quickly, but I'm happy to do a five-minute bio break if people need it. Why don't you? I guess give me a thumbs up panelists if you would like to take a break. Okay. I do not see that. So we are going to continue on. I'm sure the audience is happy with that as well. All right. So we are on to, we have a number of board policies in front of you. I don't know, Wendy, if you've gotten any comments on these.
I have just.
I'll just let you do your thing.
So we start with the first one?
Sure. Let's go ahead.
All right. So this is eight point three regarding uniform complaint procedures. And just for the audience and staff that may be listening in, this information, of course, is, is published last Friday. It is, it goes live. And so the board has, does a really great job reviewing these policies and sending in a question here or there that we can respond to. So I include that in my comments as we progress along throughout the night and introducing these board policies. Every board policy is reviewed by the Board Policy Committee, which includes Elisa McAvoy and Janet Lawson. And we also consult other department directors and our attorneys when need be. So as we progress along, I'll point out those pieces. So the first board policy that we're reviewing tonight is on uniform complaint procedure. This should be a friendly and familiar document to you because it is updated often actually. And sometimes in the course of federal program monitoring, but other times like in this situation, just a, a simple update. So it is quite lengthy and I really appreciate the feedback that I received regarding this particular board policy. I did receive information from one board member regarding a few grammatical items. Thank you so much. We'll make sure we go back and correct those for the second read. But in regards to the content, I happen to be the Title IX officer. And so I'm very familiar with the process for uniform complaint procedures and non-uniform complaint procedures. So whenever an individual has a concern, whether it be egregious in nature, which is rare, such as discrimination, harassment, et cetera, in regards to employees. Of course I oversee that process and with students, I have a consultation with Antonio Perez, our Director of Student Services. So after, after tonight's board meeting and the second reading, we will then communicate all of these changes to staff and put it on our website and so forth. So it's clear. We also discussed in the committee meeting that we make this more present on the website. Some of this information, it is housed in the HR section, but I'll be working with Jorge to have it be a little bit more visible because that was something that was noted. Are there any questions regarding the content of this particular board policy? And ours?
All right. Yeah. And these are the first readings. So we don't need to take action, just a discussion. All right. So I think we're ready to go to the next one then. Thank you.
Great. So the second, the second, this item eight point four is regarding staff development. So this is an update. We currently have a board policy on staff development. But it's really nice to see CSBA put something out to highlight the social and emotional needs of students, especially during this time. And to ensure that there's appropriate staff development for our staff classified and certificated as need be around supporting students. So there were some minor changes in this one, but are there any questions regarding this policy? And thank you to the staff development team for reviewing it as well. That was helpful.
Well, we're fortunate to have such an amazing staff development team, right? Not every district does.
Agreed. So I appreciate.
So we're already doing all the things in the policy, right? Where I imagine some other districts not, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, that there's a lot of effort that goes into social emotional learning here. And it's, it's really nice to see the policy catch up with it instead of the other way around. So.
Agreed. Good point.
Okay. So I think no comments on that one or no questions, I guess.
Okay. Moving ahead to eight point five, this board policy is an update. So we had one in place, of course, regarding suspensions and expulsion and due process accordingly. And Director Antonio Perez typically oversees suspension and expulsion and all that that entails. So there were two new laws put into place. And whether people may or may not know this, but teachers always have the right to suspend students from a classroom. That's through ed code. But this particular policy highlights that as a district, we will not be suspending or expelling students for willfully being defiant. However, a teacher may still continue to do so. And there's an additional complex piece to this where a student, for example, in middle school may have six different teachers. But if a, a first period teacher suspends a student for any reason, then that child may still continue throughout the day for their other classes. So they're not missing their other comprehensive educational classes. And it includes the requirement that students complete their work missed during the suspension time period. So those are the two main highlights in this particular board policy. I do want to appreciate Mike Wells for your comments too. They were very comprehensive and allowed us to go back and make sure that the language was more clear in the board memo. So thank you for that. Any questions?
So I think we're onto the next one.
Okay, moving forward, eight point six. This actually is a new policy for the Redwood City School District. However, Dr. Polino and our attorneys do ensure that these practices actually have been in place. So once again, it's the board policy being adopted at this time is a little late. But this really highlights child find process and including the return to school roadmap and, and some of the other elements that are most recent regarding COVID-19 and our support for special ed students. Are there any questions regarding this policy?
All right. Let's round to the next one.
Okay. And the next one goes hand in hand as well. This is eight point seven. This is really a new policy once again, but had practices have been put in place regarding the link between a parentally placed private school student and the services that are being offered. And it also addresses the return to school roadmap for child finds specifically. Are there any questions regarding this board policy?
So I don't have questions regarding this board policy. And maybe I should just wait until everybody, if they don't have any questions. I have more of a comment just all of the side. So maybe why don't I just wait to see if any of the board members have questions first?
Go ahead, Cecilia.
So just more of a clarification, if I'm not mistaken, when board policies are approved, do we know if the principals actually distribute those board policies or at some point make that comment to their or share with their teachers so that they are aware of specially new board policies are happening and, you know, that way they are aware because we don't always get teachers that attend our board meetings.
That's a great question. So there is a communication system in place for board policies and it really comes down to information that affects various groups. So. So for items surrounding employees, which tends to be the 4,000 section, there will be information that goes out. And in fact, every August, it's an annual update. But as needed, it's sent out accordingly. And then it's also the, the board policies that are approved are put into a folder that are shared with administrators. And then they share the various aspects at their staff meetings and so forth. But communication district wide to parents, for example, would you typically happen through the August annual process? Or if there's something that needs to go out intermittently, we can address that with Jorge.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Go on to the next one.
I think that that is the last one Alyssa for me on board policies. Thank you again to the committee. Appreciate the, the monthly meetings where we can dive into these. Appreciate the support. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Well, thank you, Wendy, for all the work. And thanks to Jerry too. She does a lot of the work for committee. If everything makes it easy for us. All right. So we're on to the consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A roll call vote?
Chrissy Wells.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson. Chris Marcus.
Hi.
Hi.
Vice President Dia Salka.
Hi.
President Mappel.
Hi. Let's see, as a reminder, we had moved ten point one to consent that we just approved. So ten point two is Resolution seventeen, which is authorizing the electronic meetings of the board treaties during the state of emergency. And I know we've done this before. I don't know if folks have questions or if there's anything you wanted to add, Dr. Baker.
This was, this is for December and I'm very hopeful that January, we are going to be in person. We'll be discussing that further. Kyle, I'm, I'm so optimistic and hopeful those microphones are going to be here.
So I have a tentative installation date of November 29th.
Oh, good. Then we can practice.
Yeah. So I'm crossing my fingers, but that's the last date I have.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Perfect. All right. Thank you.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I think Janet seconded it.
She did.
It's so funny. I don't know what's going on with your microphone, but I'm not catching it. Catching it. Okay. So Maria made a motion and it's seconded. Roll call, please.
Chrissy Wells.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi.
Chris Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Dia Salka.
Hi.
President Mappel.
All right. Board and superintendent reports.
I have none. I have none since last week.
I was going to say it's only been a week. I have none.
So just two real quick things. John and I had a meeting with a couple of parents about a concern at their school. And then Alyssa and I had a very brief closed session for Redwood City together. That's it.
Cecilia, anything for you?
Sorry. I'm just a meeting with, I think Alice Hettas with the RCF.
Oh, right. Yeah. You and I met with RCF. So, yeah. Do you want to just briefly say what that's about?
So we spoke about the endowment from the Redwood City citizen that left a million dollars and discussed vision to that project. Along with, so Alyssa, Shelley Maser, Jason and Florence were part of that meeting as well as Michael Smith with the city of Redwood City.
Thanks, Cecilia. Yeah. So we're on a committee. I think that's a subcommittee of the committee, but we're on a committee to help give direction to the RCF board on how to set up the endowment fund, what it would be used for and all that sort of thing. Yeah, I'm glad you remembered that meeting, Cecilia. So Jason had asked Cecilia and I to serve on that committee. And then we've been talking to Dr. Baker to make sure that his feedback is considered as well. All right. Um, Dr. Baker?
Well, today, and I think Ms. Wolf also viewed it, we got to see performances from Adalanta Selby online. Oh, the dance, they were great. They're fantastic. I was also at a Redwood City Together executive meeting. I was so glad to go from that to the performance. It was, it was great. It was really great to hear. And then just one piece of information, the, you know, the vaccination clinic is tomorrow at Hoover beginning at, I want to say 2:30. I think it's two or 2:30. We have staff members that are going to be there to, to assist. And during the meeting, I just, during the meeting, Shanna texted me and said, we got another 500 doses. So Jorge was putting that out again to our community. So I guess we will have a total, let me see, we had, we had five, we received another 200 the other day. So that made it seven. And now with another five, that's 1,200 doses. So that's pretty good. Maria, I did talk to Warren, so Warren, he helped us out because I was concerned. So, so I will be there for a bit tomorrow before I go to my, I think Mike and I are at a parcel tax meeting tomorrow night. Yeah. So I'm going to go there first and then run to the other meeting. But it, I, we're looking forward to having, you know, many families there. So Shanna was really excited. So I, so during the meeting, I, Jorge was definitely putting that out for her, another 500 spots. That, that's great. That's great. That's really good. That's it for me.
The message went out to parents.
Oh, yeah. He was already out. It's already out. He was listening and doing it the same.
All right. Anything else? Okay. So information, we don't have correspondence. Been getting a few emails here and they are mostly around the Child Nutrition Service. And about one of our school sites.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. And then other business suggested items for future agenda. All right. And then board agenda calendar. And Dr. Baker, did you find out yet if we're doing our rotation of board members at our first December meeting or our second December meeting?
I haven't found out yet. Alana has not called me back. I sent her a voicemail and a text. So she must be at court.
So as a reminder, when we, when you bring on a new board member, then, you know, there's one requirement. And then when it's a rotation, it may be different. So Dr. Baker is just checking on that. So Maria, you will be taking over either at the first December board meeting or the second one.
I'm happy to wait. No rush.
All right. So maybe it'll be December 15th and then we can, I can share the virtual gavel with you. Dance it over. All right. Okay, good. So we'll, we'll get back to everybody on that. And any, any other changes, Eliana, to the calendar? Great. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, Cecilia. And then Mike is a second. All those in favor, give me a thumbs up. All right. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate everything.
Good night.
Oh, and I guess Kyle, if you can save the chat, that should also go with the other child nutrition info.
Yeah, right now I'm waiting for the first one is still processing because, well, I had to, I had to save it online. So.
Oh, right, right. Because he had to zip over here.
Yeah. So it's still processing. This one should be a little bit easier because I'm processing it off of my computer. So you may get the one for the seven o'clock meeting first, but as soon as the, I get the process for the 5:30 meeting done, I'll probably send that along as well, but it may not be until tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. It's, I don't think, I don't think anyone's going to look at it tonight.
Fine, Kyle. Tonight.
Tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Good night.
Good night. Bye.